Calling tonight's Noblesville Common Council meeting to order for Tuesday, November 10th. Ms. Lee, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Welcome, everybody. Glad to have you here this evening. Let's start with roll call vote, Ms. Lee.
Mr. Ayer.
Present.
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a forum.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Moving on in the agenda, approval of the minutes for October 27th.
Move to approve, second.
Have a motion and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Also a hand vote, all those in favor, right hand, please. Petitions or comments by citizens. I don't have any here. Again, if you're here and you want to comment, there's a comment card just outside the doors. Please fill it out and give it to Ms. Lee as our clerk. The mayor did have something he wanted to announce here. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, good evening. I wanted to rise tonight to talk about a topic that we have talked about for the last eight months, and that's COVID-19. Now that other distractions are out of the way, I think it's important to rise and talk a little bit about the heavy increase in cases that we've seen here in the city of Noblesville and in Hamilton County and really across the state of Indiana. I'm sure Ms. Wiles can attest to that from her views. Perspective, we've seen a heavy spike in cases here. Just on a weekly report, I was looking, in over about a week's time, we've seen, we saw an additional, and the zip code 46060, an additional 162 cases in the last week in just zip code 46060, which is a drastic increase, as you can imagine, week over week. And that's just one zip code in half the city. So we are going to be buckling down across the city. We're going to continue to advise and encourage our residents to do so as well. We're in constant coordination, actually hosted a call yesterday with the Hamilton County Health Department, as well as the, our fellow cities here in Hamilton County and the county leadership in towns as well, to talk about making sure that we are speaking really with one voice here going forward. So we're going to ask the public to continue to be vigilant, and we know that vigilance will help us to keep our kids in school, will help us to keep our churches doors open and worshiping, our kids' activities moving forward. We know now a lot more than we knew in the past. We know that oftentimes schools and businesses aren't really where the hub of this virus is spreading. We know that masks and social distancing work. We know that hand sanitizing works. We know that a lot of the problems that we're seeing here in the county and the city of Noblesville are coming from small gatherings in our homes, small social gatherings with friends and neighbors. So we are asking folks not to stop those, but to simply be cautious, maintain distance, wear their masks in the, within the community. We have no plans of going back to a full shutdown like we did last spring. I'd like to just air that and I'll say it once again, there are no plans in place to go back to where we were last spring because of what we know today. But we have to continue to be vigilant. We have to continue to be smart when combating this. And one of the things that probably worries me most as a leader of this community is we have a very important holiday season coming up in front of us. And many families will gather as they always have, and oftentimes those gatherings involve some of our most vulnerable citizens. And so I ask you to think long and hard about what changes you can do this year in your holiday plans. It may, in fact, need to look a little different than it has in years past, and I think that's probably in line with this entire year. It may look a little different, but it's done to keep those in our community and our family safe. So this won't be easy. This will not be forever, though. We're making great strides. We saw yesterday with Pfizer and Indiana's own Eli Lilly making huge strides in vaccine development, so we know that hopefully a better tomorrow is upon us. But please be creative, be thoughtful, be mindful of your friends and relatives this holiday season, and please help us to continue. I think every parent, I know the first lady of the city of Noblesville will tell you they want to keep kids in school. So please continue to help do that and do your part, and I just wanted to implore the community to do that. So I'm happy to take any questions on COVID-19 at the end of this, but I'll also say that City Hall and all cities, all nonessential city services will be closed tomorrow in honor of Veterans Day, and I would just like to thank all those who serve, and we honor you tomorrow. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions, Mr. Mayor? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the work you're doing on this. Next up, our council committee reports. I'll go ahead and start. I do have one from the park board meeting. It was Wednesday, November 4th. The board heard a presentation on the five-year Park Master Plan. They approved the bid for the Fox Prairie Irrigation Project. They heard from, reports from recreation and golf. Pickleball has moved from outdoors to indoors into the recreation annex at Ivy Tech, and the numbers are amazing. They continue to increase for pickleball and all rentals. So that's good news. People are getting out and competing, I guess. Golf, October represented the seventh consecutive month of increased revenue at Fox Prairie. With the early November weather that we're having, Pro Gary Deacon is pretty sure November will be an eighth straight month of increased revenue. Also, they discussed some upcoming events. The ice rink at Federal Hill Commons will open November 21st, and they've announced the new event, the holidays at the hill, and also lights over Seminary Park that is set for December 4th. So that's just some of the information from the park board meeting on November 4th. Other committee reports, thank you, Mr. Ayer.
Rates Committee met on the 6th of November. Ms. Wiles, Mr. Boyce, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Hampton, and myself were in that meeting. The street rehabilitation contract two and three have been completed, but we have applied for some additional community crossing grant of $180,000, which would take care of some alternates that were part of that contract if we get that money. Corporate campus infrastructure improvements, that's widening of Oleo Road from 141st to 146th, from Bergen to Oleo, roundabout at 146th. Utilities and off-site drainage is ongoing. We're looking at a spring of next year with a 90-day closure of Oleo Road and substantial completion by Thanksgiving of next year of that project. Greenfield Avenue, there's a ditch, the Lear Ditch, there's a culvert that's going to be replaced. Construction will start spring of next year with a 21-day closure on Greenfield Avenue. Hamilton County Projects Carrigan Road Bridge over Morse, that's a March 1st of next year construction, 120-day time period with a 90-day closure of the roadway, and part of the waterway will be, or the waterway will close as needed for bridge demolition. End dot projects, 126th Street Interchange is open to traffic this month. 146th Street Interchange should be completed by fall of '21. State Road 32 Roundabout, State Road 32 and 38 split, 32 and River Road, that's a January letting. Work, construction in '21, and in '22, and in '23 for those roundabouts. 32 Signal Project and Road Reconstruction, locations of that is State Road 19, 8th, 9th, and 10th Street. That will be a '23 project. State Road 37 and 186th Street, Field Drive, that's a reduced conflict intersection. That'll be a right-in, right-out, and left-turns from 37 to Field Drive. That's its construction in 2022. South Allisonville Trail Project, the project limits are from Wellington Parkway to Christian Avenue and Greenfield Avenue, the roundabout there. They're going to let the bids on the, in the fall of '21 with construction in '22. Bowden Road, the design is being initiated, and that's roundabout design at 156th and Bowden Road, and they're looking for construction of that to be in 2022. Downtown lighting, the city part of that project is completed, and Duke has some lights that they're going to be working on, but the delay is caused by end dot permitting. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Ayer on that, or me on the park? I think the last one we have is finance. Mr. O'Connor?
Thanks, Mr. President. Finance Committee met November 5th, and after listening to Mr. Ayer's report, I think you can tell there's several infrastructure projects that are being conducted across the city over various timeframes, and so there's, there's no lack of projects, and we continue to endeavor to try to find ways to fund all those. Our meeting, we had a discussion about ordinance 421120, which is on the agenda regarding refinancing of bonds for Garen Catholic. I'll let Mr. Howard talk about some of the details, but this comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the finance committee. Mr. Thompson presented the '21 wastewater utility budget, which is essentially somewhat flat compared to '20, but Ray and his team continue to do a great job. One of the key things that we inquired about was whether or not we were going to see any major projects coming forward from a unfunded mandate perspective, and there may be something with respect to nitrogen, but that's on the horizon, so there isn't anything necessarily happening here in the next at least 12 or 24 months, hopefully. And Ray will present that budget yet this evening. Meet and confer negotiations were discussed. That also comes to you with a favorable recommendation. Of course, that's on our agenda this evening for both police and fire. I think Chief Mann is in the audience, so, and I don't know if Chief Mitchell's here. There he is. So they'll be able to elaborate on those things. And then cash transfers, we've got about half a dozen accounts that have money in them, actually funds that aren't necessarily needed at this point, so Mr. Spalding's recommending that we move those dollars out of those funds and then put them in a, in a different fund where we actually do need those dollars. So that'd be a little consolidation there, but I'll let, I'll let him speak to that in more detail. So that was essentially the highlights, but as I said earlier, we've got several of these projects that we're working feverishly on, trying to find ways to provide the funding for those. So happy to take questions, but that's the report, Mr. President.
Any questions for Mr. O'Connor? Claims, did you have a?
Oh, sorry about that. The claims come to you with a favorable recommendation.
I would move to approve the claims.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the claims. All those in favor, this is a hand vote. Please raise your right hand. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
New ordinances for discussion, number 40-11-20. Council to consider ordinance number 40-11-20, a change of zoning from R5 multifamily residential to DT downtown zoning district for the property of 239 South 8th Street.
Motion introduce ordinance 401120.
This property is located on the west side of 8th Street between Cherry and Hannibal. Most of you will know it as the property next door to Heavenly Suites. The property is currently zoned R5 multifamily and contains a residential structure. The area where this property is located is a mix of different zoning districts and also land uses. You can see on this map, there's, it doesn't show up very well on the overhead, but there's quite a bit of red. The red is DT, the kind of pinkish color is also a commercial zone district, which is LB. For the most part, the, this section of 8th Street, all the way down to Vine, is zoned DT or some other type of commercial use. This block remains really the only block that remains zoned R5 and used a single family residential. If you haven't gotten all the way to the back of your packets, I highly recommend you make it all the way to the photos in the back. Oksana in our office spent quite a bit of time actually labeling the different uses on the photos, just to show you kind of the wide variety of uses that are adjacent. I would love to take credit for that, but I'll give her the credit for that at the moment.
At the moment?
Yes, at the moment. The applicant did attempt to obtain approval of a land use variance and two development standards variances from the BZA in July of 2020. Those two development standards variances were for a parking reduction and a reduction of required landscape buffer because there is a residential property to the west. There was some remonstrance from the Noblesville Preservation Alliance about the conversion of the structure from a residential structure to a commercial space, and the neighbor to the west also didn't feel like there was a good separation of the parking area from their property. They felt like it just wasn't delineated very well. The board did ultimately vote to deny those requested variances. Part of the reason for the request to change to DT in this instance is actually neither one of those variances is required with the DT zone district. The DT zone district does not require off-street parking, and the landscape buffer only applies for a use variance. So those variances are no longer necessary. The petitioner did submit a letter of commitment. What they did is they went through the list of permitted uses in the DT district and actually prohibited a number of them based on the intensity of the use. We had a nice discussion back and forth about medical offices. What they've done is they will allow medical offices, but it would be a medical clinic that saw no more than 10 patients a day, up to two doctors as well. So it'd be more like the hourly appointments with therapists and psychologists. So that list of commitments is, is attached also to the staff report. Plan Commission did hear this item at their October meeting. They forwarded it to you with a favorable recommendation, nine zero. And there was no one at the meeting to speak during the public hearing.
Questions for Ms. Ashelman? Mr. O'Connor?
Denise, the R5 G U O across the street, that's the trustee's office, is that right?
That is actually our parking lot.
It's our lot.
Yeah, so Public Safety Building is here.
Oh, that helps, thanks.
And then this is the auxiliary lot for public safety.
Okay.
For those of us that have been here too long, that's Kathy Jo White's old house that we tour now. When I first worked here, there were no floorboards on the first floor. You could see the basement.
Oh, Mr. Ayer, I'm sorry.
The city owns a parking lot directly north of that, be three lots north.
Yes.
Is that a permit-only lot, or is that actually?
It is, it is a permit-only lot until 5:00, so.
So it's available after 5:00 for parking?
Yes, it is completely full. When we checked in July for permits, there are no available spaces.
I assume the overflow lot for the Public Safety Building is a permit-only lot also?
I believe so. You may want to ask the people that actually work in public safety, is it permit-only in your auxiliary lot at Cherry? Okay.
Why was that answer?
No one parks there because all the police cars.
And you'd be safe to park there, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Also, you've given me two pages of not permitted uses.
Yes.
You want to highlight some of your permitted uses?
Permitted uses would be just general office. Right now, retail is included. Doctors with less than 20 patients a day, two doctors with less than 20 patients a day.
France?
I think they're on the prohibited list, aren't they?
Bar Tavern Lounge Night Club.
I believe the restaurants were all listed on there.
A restaurant with drive-through?
A restaurant with drive-through or without drive-through?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had one about the parking between them and Heavenly Suites. How's, are they just going to wrestle for them, or how's, who gets the host parking?
So the, these parking spaces are Heavenly Suites. I do know that when they were going through the variance process, they had been in a conversation about trying to work on an agreement to use some of those spaces for their tenant. I, I don't know where they got to on that, and I don't know that they pursued the conversation when they started pursuing the DT. In the short term, there is street parking available along here, and they also will have the ability, when the Levinson is opened, to park at the Levinson. The Levinson will be about a block and a half away.
Ms. Ashelman, it looks like on the screening plan that they are proposing to do a landscape planting between the existing parking lot and the neighboring parking area?
Yeah, so, this probably shows it a little better. So you can see, there's actually a little bit of a railroad tie here that delineates the difference between. the difference between their property. But what they're doing to try to address the neighbor's comment during BZAs is to plant that landscaping, so it's just perfectly clear that that's not part of that property.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
I had the pleasure of attending the BZA meeting on another project and also the Plan Commission, and I think the general objection from NPA was the removal of a house downtown. And I agree with that generally, except in this situation where it's going to DT and not commercial. And I think the house... The project still is in keeping with the neighborhood, but it is certainly a transitional site, and I think that was very clear in the difference in Plan Commission meeting.
And that's also why I pointed you those photos, because it really does show how transitional they are, because you can visually see, oh, yeah, commercial, commercial, commercial. And then these two homes in this half-block that are the only residential remaining.
Questions? I think we will see you in two weeks then, right?
Okay.
Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance number 41-11-20, and ordinance approving text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance regarding Article II definitions, Article VIII zoning districts, and Article XI signs.
Motion to introduce 41-11-20.
Second.
Good evening. These are some minor amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, which include three definitions that are either being modified or they are brand-new definitions. Those will be for an accessibility ramp, a loading berth, and delivery service space. We're also modifying the non-conforming use sign section to include that the building or the outdoor structure upon which the sign is affixed, if it is replaced or reconstructed, then that could be cause for loss of the non-conforming use status. And the final amendment is to the boundary of the downtown mixed-use overlay district, which will include an area that is west of the river. So currently, now, the boundary basically stops here east of the river, so we are basically including this area that would be west of the river. And those are the amendments that are being proposed. This did come to you with a favorable recommendation for adoption from the Plan Commission after their public hearing by a vote of nine zero zero.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Hilton? Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance number 42-11-20, and ordinance authorizing the City of Noblesville to amend certain provisions relating to its economic development refunding revenue bonds, Series 2016A, Hammond County Catholic High School Corporation Project, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto.
Go ahead. Motion to introduce ordinance 42-11-20.
Second.
Mr. Howard?
Little bit of history, back in 2004, the city issued economic development bonds for the initial construction of Garen School. And those bonds have been either refinanced or added to for additions in both 2009 and 2016. The economic development bonds are basically non-recourse bonds. There is no financial liability to the city. In fact, the city doesn't even touch the money. The money comes from the school to the trustee, and the trustee pays the lender. So there's no financial recourse, nor is there additional duties. But Mr. Spalding will be glad to hear that as far as handling this project. The terms of the ordinance would allow the not... For tax purposes, it's a reissue, but essentially it is only a interest rate change, the same trustee, the same lender, which will be formerly the State Bank Lafayette, which is now an arm of First Merchants, has a long history with the archdiocese in this lending. You're looking at a difference in interest rates of 3.5% to 2.25% through 2037. The other thing is, this does not count toward our constitutional debt limit. It is not even disclosable in our financial statements as a contingent liability, because again, there is no recourse whatsoever. Here this evening is Mr. David Nye of the firm of Ice Miller, who's acting as bond counsel. They've acted as bond counsel for... This is the fourth run with Garen. He also has representatives of Garen here to speak if you have any additional questions. And again, this is here for introduction, but I'm sure they would enjoy not coming back if that would be the desire of this, given the fact that there is no physical or even tracking requirements to the city. With that, I'll stop and answer any questions, or if you have any questions for representatives of Garen, I'm sure they'd be willing to come up and explain this project, especially with a present value savings of $700,000 between now and 2037.
Questions for Mr. Howard?
We have to hear from Mr. Nye because he came all the way from downtown Indianapolis.
If you want to speak too, you can come up.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. President, members of the council, I'm David Nye, I'm a partner with Ice Miller. I specialize in 501(c)(3) bond financings. Mr. Howard gave a great summary. This is an outstanding 501(c)(3) bond that was issued originally through the EDC. It was our opinion that this action, which is just an amendment to the existing trust indentured to tweak the interest rate to Garen's benefit, doesn't require any action of the EDC or Plan Commission. So it's just approval to enter that amendment. And then in connection with that amendment, our firm will be giving an unqualified bond counsel opinion to the city and to Garen regarding the excludability of that interest. It will continue to be excluded... Excludable from the income of the bank post-modification. So happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Questions?
Mr. Nye, thanks for coming. When is the anticipated closing?
Well, depending on the first or second reading here, but ideally at the end of the year, so December, if not sooner.
Dr. Aitken, do you have anything to add?
No, but just thank you for your support and all you do for Garen Catholic. We are a proud partner of the City of Noblesville, so thank you.
Mr. Howard, are you asking for a waiver of the rules?
This is in the discretion of the council. It allows them to move forward a little quicker. It's not necessary one way or the other. It's just if you want to clean up your agenda for next...
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the rules and pass this on the first reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a hand vote, right, Ms. Lees? To waive the rules, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Now, I need another motion.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve... Lost the number. To approve ordinance 42-11-20.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees?
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck. Moving forward, counsel to consider ordinance number 43-11-20, and ordinance approving an agreement between the City of Noblesville and the Noblesville Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 198 with respect to benefits and compensation of certain employees of the City of Noblesville.
Motion to introduce ordinance 43-11-20.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Light?
Thank you, President Hampton and council members. Matt Light, Deputy Mayor, pleased to have the opportunity to present this agreement for your review and consideration. We believe it provides kind of a fair modifications and clarifications to the agreement between the city and the FOP Lodge 198 as to the working conditions in terms of employment for our police officers and the important work that they do for our city. This process, as you might know, plays out over a series of months during the year, and the... I really appreciate... The city really appreciates the constructive approach that the FOP representatives took throughout this process. Want to just give an expression of appreciation to Jamie Aloisio and Chris Macy, Jason Schonkweiler, and some of their colleagues. And also recognize Jeff Spalding, Holly Ramone, Chad Knett, and Chief Mann for their participation as well. There were some fiscal impacts for some of these changes, but they were all incorporated within the proposed budget for the police department that was approved in September. And we touched on some of the changes during the budget presentations with council prior to that. The memo in the packet that includes... Included some of the kind of the high points from the changes that were in this year's agreement. We clarified that extra-duty special event assignments by our officers are over and above their normal shifts, and will be paid at an overtime rate of pay. Similarly, just like with our civilian employees, we confirmed that vacation time that's previously scheduled and taken counts towards the overtime pay calculations in a pay period. We made an adjustment to better incentivize field training officer pay, which is so important to the work that is done in terms of training and readiness. And we... This one was previewed earlier in the year. We increased the clothing allowance, the annual clothing allowance. If you recall, back in February, I believe it was, change was made to go from the quartermaster system to a direct stipend, and this change effectively nets out the tax implication that was created by that earlier modification. We expanded the court time pay provisions. That's one that gives a minimum of two hours of pay to an officer that's called in to testify in a court proceeding outside of their normal shift. We extended that also to include meetings with prosecutors, again, outside of a normal shift if an officer is requested to come in and meet with the prosecutor. And there are some special orders that were approved permitting with limitations, mustaches, beards, window tinning, and outer vest carriers. I, again, appreciate the kind of the good faith negotiations and the constructive approach that was taken by the FOP. They're strong advocates for their members, but they also took, in light of the fiscal constraints that we're in this year, what we thought was a really reasonable approach in terms of the requests and the negotiations about what's feasible this year and maybe what might be more likely to be feasible in future years relative to compensation and other terms of employment. As was mentioned earlier, Chief Mann is here. I think Jamie Aloisio is here as well. I'm glad to answer any of your questions, and I'm sure they would be able to if you have any for them. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Any questions for Mr. Light? Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance number 44-11-20, and ordinance approving an agreement between the City of Noblesville and the Noblesville Professional Firefighters International Association of Firefighters Local 4416 with respect to benefits and compensation of certain employees of the City of Noblesville.
Motion to introduce ordinance 44-11-20.
Second.
Mr. Light?
Thank you again, President Hampton, council members. Again, pleased to have an opportunity to present the agreement between the city and the firefighters local 4416. The meet and confer agreement that, again, looked at the terms and conditions of employment for our firefighters and the important work that they do every day for our city. Just like with my comments with respect to the police negotiations, I want to commend Tony Murray, John Huesman, Kevin Livingston, and their local 4416 colleagues for the constructive approach that they took, the strong advocacy on behalf of their members, but the recognition of kind of some of the constraints that we're dealing with this year. The... Some of the significant points that were included in this year's agreement with the fire union include a recognition throughout the document in several places of the new community resource paramedic position, the pay scale that that position receives, the impact that that position has on our minimum staffing totals. And it was also added to the acting and capacity pay program that currently exists when, for lack of a better word, someone gets called up to serve in a community resource paramedic position for a particular shift. We also changed vacation accrual rules in a similar way that was already done with the civilian handbook and with the police agreement to kind of allow effectively some of our younger firefighters to access vacation days and hours sooner than they were able to previously. That was something that we thought was appropriate for a number of reasons, including some comparisons to some of our friendly competitors within Hamilton County that we're often competing against in terms of good talent for our fire department. And we made some updates to clarify our policies on pregnancy leave and light duty assignments for firefighters that are pregnant to align with kind of the most recent guidance from the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. And the last thing I'll note that is that we increased the city contribution to the annual awards banquet for the firefighters local 4416 from $1,000 to $2,500. Again, I appreciate your consideration of this proposed agreement. Both this agreement and the police agreement were approved this morning by the Board of Works.
Questions of Mr. Light?
I had one just about the education incentive pay. Is that... It's $750 additional pay per year. Is that unlimited, however many want to try it, or is there a certain cap on that?
That piece wasn't addressed by this year's agreement, so that's been in existence previously. I may have to check into that.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
President followed.
I shouldn't have told you. I didn't think about it. I read it right there.
I think there are some rules around that so that there's some limitations on it, but I haven't been dealing with that one as much directly recently.
Questions for Mr. Light or Chief Mitchell? He's here.
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
Just a comment. I want to thank the police and fire. They do a wonderful job for the City of Noblesville, continue to be there for our citizens. I get to witness it firsthand in a lot of cases. Since I'm fairly near Station Number Three, but I also get to work the pole there, and you can watch the activity, and we've got some dedicated public safety folks that work for us, so I appreciate everything they do, and I know this council does. And so, you know, these are reasonable changes, and we do want to be competitive because we need quality public safety folks here, and they protect us and do a great job. So thanks for all the work that you did, Matt, and everyone on the police and fire teams. It's most appreciated.
Well said.
President, I know that you just asked Mr. Light a question about the education, but given that this was approved by the Board of Public Works this morning, is this something where... I know, we would go back and do that for both.
It's not effective until January 1st, so I don't know that it would...
Okay.
But appreciate you asking.
Sure.
I think we all echo Mr. O'Connor's thoughts and comments. We're proud of the men and women that do the work here in Noblesville. Thank you very much.
Yes, do you want to say something?
Yeah.
Didn't recognize him in his mask.
Sorry, John Huesman, District Vice President for Noblesville Firefighters. I don't know if I can maybe clarify your question. What section was that you were looking at in the contract? It might be something that's...
It doesn't affect this year.
Make sure I'm on the same page as you.
Education. And all the question was, was is there a cap on it, or is it...
So if it's Section 12 on Page 17, is that what you're referring to?
Sixteen, yeah.
So that program actually has been essentially on hold for a number of years. Ms. Ramone could probably speak more to exactly when that took place, but there hasn't been any changes to that section of the contract for a number of years, to my recollection. Like I said, it's currently on hold right now, as it is.
Okay.
I don't know if that answers your question anymore or not, but...
Yeah, that helps. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Also, just take time to thank all the members of council, mayor's office as well. There's a good process this year. We appreciate everything you guys do for us as well. I appreciate the time. And also the offsetting of health care. Our members really appreciate that as well and ourselves, so thank you very much.
ourselves, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe.
Moving forward to proposed development presentation. Counsel to consider introductory information for a proposed project adjacent to the northwest intersection of Greenfield Avenue and Bowden Road to be known as Bowden Road Crossing Plan Development. Mr. Harden.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council, Mr. Mayor. It's good to see everyone in person. Thank you for having us here this evening. I'm pleased to be here representing David Weekly Holmes and Ed Freeman from that firm is here with us this evening and also Wersler Realty and Rob Wersler is here as well. This development team has been working with the city for a number of months, including the mayor's office, economic development, the planning department, engineering department. So, we're pleased to be here to begin the process of moving forward, to get your input and feedback. So, this development proposal is approximately 30 acres. It's located at the northwest corner of Greenfield Avenue and Bowden Road. We'll walk through a little bit of the history of the property and the location. It's currently all zoned, the 30 acres is all zoned commercial today. And so, we'll give you a little bit of the history of why we think there might be a better use for mixed use development here. So, back in 1997, this is in aerial photograph, Sam Swafford is here also with us. He's the person doing all the actual, actual work on this project. He just had me come up here tonight to talk about it. But Sam found this black and white photograph. I told Sam there was color TV back in 1997, but I'm not sure if he was, he was even, he's close to being born yet. You're probably born yet, but I'm right, Sam. But at any rate, back in 1997, this is the traffic pattern. If you remember, Greenfield Avenue, which was then known as State Road 238, was the major corridor connecting State Road 37 and I-69. And so, this was the route to take. There was no 146th Street, there was no corporate campus yet. And so, then back in 1997, the Cedar Path PUD ordinance was adopted in anticipating that this commercial corner was going to be the primary regional commercial node with anchored by big boxes and a power center. And so, that's how it's been zoned since 97, has not had any commercial development yet since that time. A little bit later, you can see what's happened since then, and we go through a little bit of the history and the executive summary for you. But sometime after 97, in the early 2000s, the city had the vision for the corporate campus, the original 3,200 acres. And then later in the 2000s, the city and the county worked together collaboratively to fund and design and then build 146th Street and Campus Parkway. As you can see on this exhibit, it dramatically changed for the better for the city, the road patterns and drive patterns that had an impact obviously as well on this site. Instead of having this be at the intersection of the center of the east-west connecting road between the two highways, it now was essentially diverted along Greenfield at Bowden to go south to connect to the now new main east-west corridor of 146 and Campus Parkway. So, again, it's still a good location, it's good real estate, it's located in a good area where there are utilities nearby, appropriate access to a variety of street patterns, but it's probably not best suited any longer for a large regional commercial center. So, then you might ask, well, what else is there to know about this site? Well, what we have here in your package, you'll see kind of a, kind of give you a little bit more orientation. Here in yellow, this is identifying the Autumn Breeze multi-family apartments. Then up here in the orange outline is the Cedar Path or the Deer Path neighborhood. And those have probably an average assessed value of around $180,000. Again, that was from, you know, approved back in 1997. And then across the street, of course, is the Music Center. And so, those are the, some of the influences in the immediate neighborhood of where this remaining 30 acres is located. So, here is the concept plan for the development. The 30 acres, as I mentioned before, is currently zoned for commercial. So, the bulk of the southern 20 acres along the intersection and running along both Greenfield and Bowden, it's still planned for commercial, but rather than large, big box anchored regional commercial, this is now proposed for a neighborhood serving commercial node, which the types of uses that would be anticipated would be the types of uses that the nearby residential areas and businesses would like to be able to patronize and have them as kind of neighborhood nodes. And so, it is designed and planned for that. The other areas that we have included, you can see in your packet, we've got two different types of residential, and that's on the northern 10 acres that you see right up here. Again, the Autumn Breeze apartments are immediately to the north. And so, then here is the residential area. And David Weekly Holmes, working with the city leaders, have worked through what would be appropriate missing middle. So, we've talked a lot about the missing middle here in Noblesville. These are both for sale types of homes. The first component would be the for sale townhomes, that would be in the center part outlined by the red here. Those are townhomes that are proposed to include three bedrooms, would range between 1,600 and 1,850 square feet. And the home sale prices are expected to range from 260,000 to 285,000. And illustrative home images are showing up on the screen as well as in your packet. Then the second type of, again, missing middle type of residential dwellings would be for sale, two-family attached. The images aren't showing great on the screen, but hopefully in your packet you're able to see them better. Again, these are three bedrooms, they're expected to range between 1,600 and 1,775 square feet and ranging up to $290,000. And again, both of these are planned and proposed for for sale with individual fee simple lots for each of those. In the middle, there will be a common area with outdoor gathering spots. There also, as working through with engineering, you'll see in the plans, there's both vehicular and pedestrian connectivity to the neighborhood commercial node that we have as well planned. As we are working through on the commercial side of the plan, Mr. Wersler asked the city at a variety of different points, what architecture does the city like? Tell me what you like and let's see if we can't incorporate that into the plan. So, these are some images that were suggested as attractive and appropriate. And so, these are the inspiration for the neighborhood commercial node, giving you just a sense of the fit and finish and quality and character of the buildings. And then we also have images there too on the corner, is proposed for auto fuel convenience store. You can see this has been worked through with the city staff as well for a number of months. This is an all masonry, very attractive design. And these will be going through continued reviews, we go through the process, but wanted to show you the fit and finish of that as well. Yes, finally, just a couple of other notes. The plan will then help fill some of the missing pieces. So, in this area, there are trails from our north and to our west. And so, we have trail connections here and up here. And this development will be building approximately a half mile of the perimeter 10-foot trail and then over a mile and a half of internal sidewalks within the, within the project. Finally, we've got some additional information in the packet for you, there'll be some more details as it goes through the TAC review, but again, it has planned landscaping. We've got the details in there about what the landscaping would look like along the buffer. And as we get to plan commission and move forward, we have additional details on entryway signs and some things like that that the city is used to seeing and we'll have those available as well. So, that is the proposed development and we'd be happy to take any questions or comments anyone might have this evening.
Questions for Mr., yeah, Mr. Aaron.
Mr. Harden.
Yes, sir.
I like your concept and it would be a good use for the area. Some of the concerns, how many units are you looking at from a residential standpoint?
Yeah, I apologize for not mentioning it. So, there's 40 townhomes and 58 two-family attached. So, 98 total, sir.
Yeah. And are those streets all city spec streets?
They are not. They, we've been talking with the engineering department about trying to make these a little bit narrower to be calmer, to calm the traffic through there. So, these are a little bit smaller in width and the David Weekly team, they are inviting, I don't know if they've got it set yet, but inviting the engineering department over to a project they're working on in Carmel that has reduced width streets as a traffic calming. So, that's something that's different, that'll need to be reviewed during the TAC review and the ongoing process.
Engineering and fire department, police department will be involved.
Absolutely, the fire department will have to be satisfied. And I believe the engineering team has said that they meet the turn radie, it's just the narrower streets a little bit.
And one issue we've run into recently with the density and the private streets is the off, the parking for residents, visitors and so forth. I count roughly 35 additional parking spots if that's, I know that's just a rendering, but I don't know that with 98 units at Christmas time, that 35 parking spots are going to work. And with the reduced width on the streets, with on-street parking, it becomes a problem for fire and police when, and like I say, this may just be a rendering, there may be more parking available. But if we had to lose density to incorporate enough parking to accommodate where we didn't have on-street parking, I think would be important.
Thank you for bringing that up. That was something that the team was aware of at the beginning and so they specifically, I thought they've done a great job of actually proactively incorporating guest parking. And they've listened to that, it's come up before here in the city, so they proactively have, right off the bat, and this is more than just a concept plan. They've got, you know, as you know, to file, they've got a full engineering preliminary development plan.
I'm just letting you know what's been an issue. And with 35, 98 residents and 35 additional parking, I just don't know that that's enough.
Sure, and they do have, obviously they have driveways, it fits two.
I understand, but at Christmas time, that doesn't seem to make a difference. Plus, we've had issues in the past where nobody uses their garage except for storage, so they're using their driveway.
Okay, I appreciate that and the team is aware, they want to make sure it works well too.
I'm just expressing concern.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
To that same question, how long are the driveways? Can I park two cars deep?
Yeah, Sam Swafford is prepared to answer that question for us tonight, but the setback is 19 feet. And so, I told Sam that we'll want to, we've done this before in some other projects where you actually look at, what are the actual average, you know, length of vehicles? A lot of, a lot of seasoned towns will have parking, you know, typical parking spots are either 10 by 18, 9 by 20. So, it's 19-foot setback. And so, again, the team is aware of that and they're trying to, they're inviting the department out to look at some projects specifically to take a look at that.
19 feet inside the sidewalk, so we're not blocking the, okay.
Yeah, 19 feet from the...
So, you said what you said.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Mr. Harden, it would be almost inconceivable that someone wouldn't know the Music Center was across the street. But when the other residential uses went in, we required, recorded in the covenants a disclosure that there's a Music Center there and there may be lots of traffic and sometimes there may even be music that they don't like spilling over into the lot. I'm sure staff can share those with you. But rather than have our police department and everyone get calls, it would be, I think it would be almost mandatory to put that into the covenants. We think things are obvious, but what's obvious to some is not obvious to others.
Ed Freeman specifically has advised me that they've already, they're planning to do that, they'll have it in their deeds, even though literally you'll see it from the model homes, but yes, sir, yeah, they plan to do that as well.
Mr. O'Connor.
Steve, what's the square footage of the commercial excluding the convenience store? I'm just trying to get a feel for commercial.
Yeah, so we've got about 20 acres and here in Hamilton County, single-story commercial has an assessed value typically about a million dollars an acre. You can normally achieve about 8,000 square feet per acre. So, probably at most maybe 160,000, if I'm doing the math fast enough.
Okay.
It may not be that much, but it's about what you can normally yield with a single story.
Any other question or questions? I just want to make sure that I'm clear on right in, right out, and we've talked about this before, but just trying to make sure that, and I'm sure engineering will cover it, but just trying to ensure that we don't have issues around that intersection of Bowden and Greenfield from a traffic flow perspective.
So, number one, there's a traffic study underway that will address that specifically. So, we'll have that as we go through the process. So, A and F Engineering is doing that. This is a right in, right out only. This, I hope I'm saying this right, this is a full access, I believe that is as well. This is a right in, right out. So, these two are right in, right out. And there are certain requirements, they have to be so far back from the intersections. And we're, so we're doing a traffic, they're doing a traffic study right now to confirm and I, you know, that the locations and improvements are appropriate from, both from a traffic safety and I think from the developer's perspective, from an economic development perspective. They hope that this will be, this plan will be approved from an economic development perspective. We also recognize we need, it has to be safe and work well from a traffic flow, so that's underway as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just had one about the permitted uses. It's real defined as to, I'm trying to read it here. Restaurant with drive-through service shall not be permitted on outlet 5 or 6, you know what I'm trying to say. I just was kind of wondering why specific to those two and why not 4?
So, those are, those are from the residential home builder, required and requested that the commercial side of it agree to those restrictions so that you wouldn't have certain uses right up against the residential.
But 4 could be a drive-through, right there, the one you...
That's correct.
Okay.
So, those are between the residential developer and the commercial developer, those things that they'd asked for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, it's been presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to miscellaneous number one, counsel to consider resolution RC-46-20, a resolution confirming approval of a waiver of non-compliance concerning a personal property tax abatement for Curium US Pet LLC. Mr. Murray.
Greetings. Thank you, President Hampton, members of council, Andrew Murray, Economic Development Director for the record. This item is a carryover item from your previous agenda, which is the second and final approval to reinstate a previously approved personal property tax abatement. This tax abatement would be made available to Curium Pharma, who is a new medical diagnostic firm, which we met and heard from at your previous meeting, as you'll recall. So, this item is consistent with that previously approved economic development agreement. Procedurally speaking, this is required to hold a public hearing to which has been properly noticed for this evening. And this comes to you with full support from administration as well as this council's finance committee. So, with that, I'll stop there. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I recommend approval as presented this evening.
Questions for Mr. Murray? Then I am opening the public hearing. For Connor.
Seeing no one from the public coming forward, I move that we close the public hearing for resolution RC-46-20.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
President, I'd make a motion to approve resolution RC-46-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Miscellaneous number two, counsel to hear an overview of the 2021 wastewater utility budget. Mr. Thompson.
Good evening. As you're aware, there's like five sub-departments within the utility, and those are administration, billing, stormwater, collection system, and then the plant and lift stations. What I'll do is I'll go through each one of those and give you some information and then kind of give you a summary after I go through those. The administration, in the 100 series, there is no increase. It's pretty much everything's identical to last year. The 200 series, we have no change. And the 300 series, really, it's only about $3,000 that we've increased, but a lot of that's just for the growth. And then the 400 series, we did put about $10,000 for computer replacement and other things we need in the IT world down around the treatment plant for everything to work properly. So, overall, in administration, most of that is for the computers and IT equipment. And then we had about $3,000 just in growth-related items. then we have about $3,000 just in growth-related items. In the billing section, there is no change in the 100 series. We do have a person that's retiring, so there was a jump of $19,500 for that severance, and other than that, there's no changes. The 200 series, we actually dropped it down about $400. And the 300 series, there was a jump mainly because of the growth for about $19,000. So there is no capital improvements or anything we're doing with the billing. So basically, it's an increase of about $39,000, and 19 of that is the severance, and then the other is just due to the growth, additional billing, things like that. And stormwater, we also have a retirement in the 100 series, and that severance is around $26,000. Then we have a deduct of around $7,000 in the 200 series, and some of that, we've been concentrating a lot on the stormwater system the last several years. This year, we're going to try to concentrate more on the sanitary, or this coming year, more on the sanitary system, and we just kind of use some of that as a carryover to the sanitary. The 300 series is about $8,500 of an increase, and some of that's just the training and things that we go through. The overall for the stormwater is about $27,000 increase, 26 of that is the severance for the employee that's leaving. Collection system, no change in the 100 series. There's an increase of about $9,000 in the 200 series. There's an increase of about $34,000 in the 300 series. And then in the capital improvement, there is no increase as far as our sewer rehab, but for the lift station pumps and panels, there's an increase of about $125, or I'm sorry, $125,000. And then the collection system, we have one truck that needs replaced, and we're estimating that to be around $75,000. So overall, for the collection system, it's about $200,000 between the lift stations, the panels and pumps, and for the truck, and then about another $35,000 for manhole linings, root removal, things like that. And then in the plant, there's no increase in the 100 series. The 200 series, about a $27,000 increase. Most of that is for bearing seals, general supplies, rebuilding equipment there around the treatment plant. And then the 300 series, most of that, there's about $31,000, and that's just some training, utilities, equipment maintenance, things like that. So it's pretty much O and M around the treatment plant. And then there's about a $100,000 increase in the rehab of the equipment around the treatment plant, and that pretty much gets us around $158,000 total for the treatment plant. So overall, the budget is about a 1.4 increase, and 1.4%. Another thing I need to mention is our bond debt. We have $100,000 annually that we put in for Barrett Law. And then we have the 2020 bond, which for 2021 will only be paying on that bond about $323,000. They refinanced, or were refinancing the 2011 bond, which will come due in 2021, and that's for $418,000. So between the 2020 bond and the 2021 bond, which is refinancing of the 2011 bond, we actually have a deduct of 6.3%. So the overall budget, that's what helped drop it down to 1.4% for the overall budget. And that amount is $13,319,338. The projected revenue for 2021 is $13,816, or $13,816,950. We do try to stay around $200,000, $300,000 below our projected revenue. We are a little bit more of a difference this time, but that is mainly because of the difference in the bonding. And then for 2022, that'll get back up because we'll be back to our normal payment system and full bond for 2022. But that's about all I have to tell you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any of your questions.
Questions for Mr. Thompson. You do.
Well, thank you. I don't know why, I can't get over that nervousness coming up here, but --
It's well-presented, and it's right here. I was kind of confused by the percentage, and then you explained it with the bonds.
Scott Miller from Baker Tilly, they're a big help for us and help us go the right direction every year. He's here if there's any questions. I don't know if you have any for him, but.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. No action needed on that, right, Ms. Lees? Council to consider, this is now miscellaneous three, council to consider an appointment to the Police Merit Commission. Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, President Hampton. So the current merit board from the council's appointment is going to be expiring the first thing next year. We had David Johnson, when he went out about four years ago, then we put on Darren Peck, we appointed him, and he has been serving, he became the council's representative on the merit board, and he's done a nice job from all parties that I have heard from. So I contacted Darren. Darren does have a desire to stay on for another appointment if we would like to have him. So I would make a recommendation that we would, and I would make a motion that we would appoint Darren to a second term, but I am more than happy to hold off on that motion for us to have discussion in case there is anyone else that, anyone would like to consider, anyone knows of someone interested.
Any discussion on this? So you're making that motion?
If nobody has any other things to say, then I would make that a motion that we approve Darren Peck for a second term.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Mark.
Great.
And thank you, Darren Peck, sir. Number four, council to receive notice of the 2021 appointments. Ms. Lees.
Good evening. I'm just notifying you that the council's appointments to the facade grant review committee, the Parks Foundation Board, the Plan Commission, and the Redevelopment Commission, those terms will expire at the end of the year. So you do need to find people to fill those appointments, and then we'll vote on those appointments at your final meeting of the year so that they can all take office by the first of the year.
And that is December 22nd, I believe, is our final meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Do you have anything, Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, we have two on the facade grant committee and two on the redevelopment commission. If anybody wants to know who they are or has suggestions, send them to Mr. Hampton and I.
And two openings?
Both? Yes. Two openings on the --
Facade grant.
And there are people currently on there. We would either need to reconfirm them or replace them. And the Parks Board Foundation, we do have somebody that's actually retired in the middle of the year, so we do have an opening. That's the only one we have an opening. The rest are reappointments if we so choose. I've not had a chance to talk to the people that are on those particular committees now, but we'll work through. But if you have any suggestions, please send those along.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lees. Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Moving on to transfers, council to consider four cash transfers to properly capitalize internal service funds for contingent liabilities. Do I need to read all these, or just when we vote?
No.
Okay. So Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, again, this was discussed in the Finance Committee, and that may have been gone over a little bit earlier in the committee reports, but essentially what you have here looks more complicated mechanically than what's going on conceptually. You know, there's four actions here, and I'm basically simultaneously trying to accomplish two goals. One, clean up some old obsolete funds that have, you know, were set up, you know, years ago, but don't serve their function, but have some remaining cash balances in them. And then also address kind of an important financial management concern that any city has, and that is certain contingent liabilities that the city has related to things like, you know, severance pay, property and casualty insurance, unemployment insurance, workers' comp, all of those types of things. And so basically, these four transfers together, clean up those old funds, you know, be able to take them off the books, use the money in the funds to shore up those contingent liabilities, and put us into a better position financially so that the numbers you see on things like our fiscal plan that show remaining balances in the general fund and rainy day fund, you can rest assured those are, you know, there's no contingent liability out there tapping into those, and you can look at those as available money to spend because the contingent liabilities are correctly funded with this action. So that's basically what's going on, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Spalding?
Mr. President, we've been looking at this for some time, so I'd like to thank Mr. Spalding for getting this accomplished. The contingent liabilities have always been something that the Finance Committee has had a concern about, trying to make sure that we've adequately funded these funds, not to be redundant. So I think this is well-timed. It took a little while to get to it just because of the workload and other things from a budgetary standpoint, but it's put us in the right position in a number of these funds that frankly, the expenses are going to be there, so we're preparing for those. And I think going forward, it'll make the budgeting process a little simpler, too, so.
All right.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I have moved to approve TC-0420, TC-0520, TC-0620, and TC-0720.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Council comments. Mrs. Waters.
I would just like to congratulate the Noblesville Lady Millers for their back-to-back state championship in ladies soccer, but also congratulate the Garen Catholic girls' soccer team for being state runner-up. So two schools from Noblesville, and those final games was wonderful. The Noblesville cheer team has also won state championships. Cross-country teams have had a great season, so Noblesville schools and the Noblesville community should be very proud of our young people and athletes.
Thank you. They did a great job, and the mayor and I have been in communication with the school, and we're going to bring them in here at some point, both the soccer team and the cheerleading team, to celebrate their state championship with them. But that's been sort of tabled until we can figure out when's it's best to bring them in here. Might be 2021 before we can get them in here, but yeah, big, big win.
Bring them in.
There you go. Any other council comments?
Thank you, Darren.
All of our veterans.
Yes.
Serving. Appreciate it.
Happy birthday to my mom.
She turns 90 years old today. I was there for lunch. Is there a motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
We are.